Well, welcome back to the City Planning Commission meetings. Welcome to the Commissioners, welcome to the Department of City Planning Team, and welcome to the members of the public. Before commencing, I want to acknowledge the changes that have occurred since last we met on the sixteenth of March of this year. The changes include the horrific number of lives lost to COVID-19, including loved ones of Commissioners and the Department of City Planning Team, the murder of George Floyd and others by police, and the urgent and loud demand for racial justice, which has been made all the more poignant by the recent passing of Representative John Lewis. So, in recognition of these events and with the fervent hope for a cure to both the pandemic and the scourge of racism, I think it would be appropriate for many of us to hold eight minutes and forty-six seconds of silence, but in recognition of the number of people on the call and the business of the Commission, I would ask for just a moment of silence. Thank you. I now want to outline the plan for returning to our regular schedule. Starting today, we'll resume our previous schedule of meetings in August. In these August meetings, the City Planning Commission will advance projects that were in public review when we went on hiatus in March, will refer non-Ular items out to community boards, will vote on non-Ular items, and will have presentations on projects for future certification. The Department will not certify projects into public review in August. We are today announcing that the portion of the Mayor's executive order that suspended Ular will expire on Monday, the fourteenth of September. And so, on that date, the Department will begin certifying new projects into public review, and the Ular time clocks will all resume. I think I speak for the entire Department when I say that we are very excited to return to doing the important work of the Commission. And so, without further ado, Mr. Secretary, please begin the meeting.
Certainly. So, good afternoon, and welcome to the New York City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, August third, two thousand twenty. We are holding this meeting via Zoom webinar, and before we begin our regular agenda, we will be having a presentation by Kate Lemus-McHale, Director of Research at the Landmarks Preservation Commission, on the designation of the Monita Street Historic District. Kate?
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. I am Kate Lemus-McHale, Director of Research at the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Monita Street Historic District in the Bronx designated on June twenty-third as New York City's one-hundred-and-fiftieth Historic District. The Historic District consists of forty-two semi-detached houses, all executed in the Renaissance Revival style and built in nineteen oh eight to nineteen oh nine. It is an intact example of the early twentieth-century development that occurred in Hunts Point, and due to its consistency of historic architectural characters, the district's strong sense of place stands out within the broader neighborhood. In response to concerns about development pressures changing the character of the block, a request came to the Landmarks Commission from Councilmember Raphael Salamanca on behalf of the community, and LPC did extensive research and analysis. We held two information meetings on the block with property owners to describe our study and to talk about the designation process and how to work with the Landmarks Commission. At our public hearing on May twelfth, eleven people spoke in favor of the proposed designation, including Councilmember Salamanca, representatives of the New York Landmarks Conservancy, the Historic District Council, the Victorian Society of New York, the Mott Haven Historic District Association, and five individuals. We also received letters of support from the Banana Kelly Community Improvement Association and three individuals, and one property owner spoke in opposition to the proposed designation at our public hearing. Located between Lafayette and Garrison Avenues, the Monita Street Historic District is shown here in red. I just want to make sure you're seeing the map. Okay. The Historic District is located in Hunts Point, which contains a mix of industrial, commercial, institutional, and residential uses. Shown here, outlined in red, the Historic District is the only historic district in Hunts Point, and designated landmarks in the direct vicinity include the American Bank Note Company Printing Plant and the Peter S. Ho House known as Sunny Slope. The Longwood Historic District and Extension are southwest of the proposed of the district. For much of its history, Hunts Point was a rural area known as West Farms. This eighteen-eighty-seven map shows the future location of Monita Street outlined in red, and large estates dotted the landscape, including Sunny Slope shown in the bottom photograph, and a no-longer-exent home of Walter Chisholm shown in the top photograph. Originally part of Westchester County, West Farms was annexed to New York City in eighteen seventy-four, bringing infrastructure improvement to the area. The expansion of the subway into the Bronx from Manhattan initiated the area's shift from a rural community to an industrial hub in the first decades of the twentieth century. The west-side IRT subway line, shown here, reached the Bronx in nineteen oh four, and the nineteen-ten Intervale Avenue subway station was a major impetus for develop in Hunts Point. Easy access to the waterfront and the railroad made Hunts Point ideal for the location of industry, and large manufacturing buildings such as shown here began to replace the old country estate. The Monita Street was cut through the Fox and Fayle family estates in eighteen ninety-seven, as shown on the nineteen oh four map on the left. It was developed by one developer, James Meehan, who developed both sides of the street. He designed the buildings on the west side and hired the architectural firm of Dalb and Cramborg to design the houses on the east side. Construction started on the block in the fall of nineteen oh eight and was completed by nineteen oh nine, so a very short period of very cohesive development. The nineteen-eleven map on the right illustrates that Monita Street is one of the earliest developments in this area, along with a row of tenements directly to the east that remain extent but are heavily altered today. Construction of these houses occurred in anticipation of the area's industrial development, which was expected to attract skilled and well-played employees. The nineteen oh nine advertisement on the left described this area as one of the prettiest and most accessible parts of the Bronx. The nineteen-twelve newspaper clipping on the right included a photograph of Monita Street as evidence of the rapid development of Hunts Point. Also shown in that nineteen-twelve article is the American Bank Note Company Printing Press Building, a New York City landmark, which is illustrative of the industrial development in the broader area. And today, the surrounding area consists mostly of industrial buildings and larger-scale apartment houses, as you can see in this aerial image with the district outlined in The buildings just outside the Historic District emphasize this contrast between the Historic District and surrounding area and were not included within the boundary. Shown here circa nineteen oh nine, Monita Street's residential enclave was primarily home to Russian, German, and Hungarian immigrants, that mostly spoke Yiddish and had occupations such as policemen and insurance clerks, or worked at nearby button and box factories. Demographics in Hunts Point began to shift in the nineteen forties with an increasing Hispanic population, which remains predominant today. Monita Street Historic District stands out from its industrial and commercial surroundings due to its residential character in combination with its historical and aesthetic consistency, all of which gives it a strong sense of place. One developer and two architects are responsible for its construction, all in the same style, so it stands out as a discreet enclave within Hunts Point. Executed in a modern, in a modest Renaissance Revival style, the two-story and basement semi-detached building feature mirror image facade with rounded projecting bays, low-stone stoops, simple cornices with steeply pitched parapets above, and ornamentation concentrated around doors and windows. There is some ornamental variation on both sides of the street. The east side contains a consistent row of semi-detached houses, as you can see here, in brick with restrained ornament. On the west side, we see a little more elaboration, a little more variety. We see some Flemish parapets here in these buildings. We also have some stained glass tramsoms and some more decorative detail above the doorways here. But with these buildings of a similar form and height and historic character on both sides of the street, we have a very strong sense of place. We did analyze integrity as part of our usual process, and while we noted some alterations on the block, overall, it really does retain a lot of intactness and historic integrity, with alterations tending to include things we typically see like replacement windows and doors. We see the introduction of some areaway fences here, some moderate changes to the roofline, and some replacement of historic facade fabric, while keeping the more decorative elements Overall, the houses unified style, height, and form, with their rhythm of bays and decorative detail remaining intact and contribute to the strong sense of place and good integrity of the block, looking much as it did in this nineteen twenty-three photograph. It really stands out in the neighborhood as a complete block of early twentieth-century residential architecture. I want to point out a unique edge condition here, where the lots on the west side of Monita Street abut the sidewalk of Beretto Street to the west, where they are visible. The streetscape here is characterized by a variety of low-rise, nonhistoric utilitarian structures, including garages and gates, which do not contribute to the historic character of Monita Street, and proposed changes to these nonhistoric elements would be reviewed within that utilitarian context. The mid-twentieth century brought drastic economic and infrastructure changes that had devastating impacts on the South Bronx. Hunts Point saw a rise in prime, and the neighborhood experienced severe disinvestment, causing some longtime residents to leave, but many of Monita Street's residents remained and took special care to see that their homes continue to look much as they did more than a century ago, and the level of historic character that remains is really a testament to this. Today, Monita Street continues to have a strong sense of place and historic character distinct from its surroundings, and remains a remarkable example of the early twentieth-century construction boom that occurred in the South Bronx. And that concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lemus-McHale. What a great way to start off our CTC session. At this point, I'd open it up to any Commissioners. Could you take this off of the screen, please?
Oh, yeah.
And I see that Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Kate, I was just looking at the images you showed there, and it seems that while the buildings are very well-preserved and pretty intact, the stoops are a bit of a hodgepodge of different types of new fencing and bits and pieces, and I wonder whether there isn't a possibility, if there's a homeowner association or something, of bringing those stoops back to more of their original architecture, because they're such a visual, it's the first thing you see as you walk down the street, is a array of fences and stoops.
Yes, and in our research, we found that there were these low-stone stoops typically, but that there really wasn't historic fencing, but the Commission can approve something that maintains the transparency that you would have from, say, an iron fence. And so, that is certainly something that, you know, if people wanted to get together to propose those kind of improvements that the Commission would look at.
Commissioner Dwork?
Oh, thank you. I noted that you said one of the residents at the public hearing was against the project. Can you collaborate on what their reason was versus the other eleven that were in favor?
We did hear from one of the property owners just concerned about the Historic District regulation limiting his development potential of his property. We did hear a lot of support for the proposed designation in terms of maintaining this consistent character, and we spoke with the property owner quite a lot, following his testimony, to just walk him through the process of working with the Landmarks Commission and the types of applications we review and can approve.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Mavie?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, the two questions that I was going to ask were asked by Commissioner Bernie and Commissioner Dwork, but I do want to say that I have a little bit of history with this block. I used to be the Chair of the Community Board, too, and this block has been asking for historic designations for years. I'm really excited to see this happen for various reasons, and one is that this keeping this block intact. I happen to live in the Longwood Historic District, just southeast of here, and to me, this is one of the last vestiges of what the Bronx used to be and the history of the Bronx, and I think that it's really important to keep those. I am concerned about, I know some of the homeowners there, so I know that they're, some of them are meter means, they've had these houses for a very long time. I'm wondering if there's any programs, any low-interest programs that can be offered. I know there's some through the, you know, the state landmark, but if there's anything that could be offered to them, I think that would be an incentive to, for example, remove those chain link fences that are really ugly. There were some homes that, you're right, these homes never had fencing in front of them, and some folks did take the care to put some really nice wrought iron fencing that kind of meets the period. Others are just chain link, and they just don't, it just, it takes away from the beauty. So, I would agree that if there was some kind of program that would afford these homeowners the ability of low-cost loans, that would really help in improving their property.
Yes, thank you. In addition to what may be available through state tax credits for homeowners, the Landmarks Commission also does have a small matching grant program for districts that are within, or landmarks that are within eligible census tract areas, which this is. So, that's another thing that would be available. And there are also low-interest loan programs available, such as through the Landmarks Conservancy, that is another tool.
Other questions from the Commission?
Our homeowners, I'm sorry, Chair Lago, I was on mute, I didn't realize that. So, are other homeowners, are homeowners informed as they make application, or is there some sort of informational, educational flyer, brochure, something that goes to the homeowner that says, "By the way, here are some programs that you can apply to in the event that you want to invest, reinvest in your home and improve some, make some improvement, like maybe some windows." I mean, I know the difficulty of getting with windows in the district, it's annoying, and it's a high maintenance item, it really is. So, the information would be greatly appreciated, I'm sure.
Yes, we, in our meetings that we had on the block, we talked through these opportunities, and it's also available on our website, and people are welcome to reach out to me or to anyone with questions to learn more about this.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, and thank you for the designation, we appreciate it.
Any other Commissioners who would like to speak? Okay, then, thank you again, Ms. Lemus-McHale, and back to you, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kate. We will now begin the regular review session agenda for the Planning Commission for Monday, August third, two thousand twenty. The time is one twenty-two PM, and a forum is present. The first item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of the Monita Street Historic District Designation in the Bronx, and our presenter is Justin Lamorella. Justin?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, this is an application for the designation of a Historic District on a portion of Monita Street in the Hunts Point Community, Community District Two in the Bronx. Next slide, please. Might be a little lag there. Okay, the proposed Historic District, as we've just discussed, is in the residential portion of the Hunts Point Peninsula. The area is well-served by transit, with the six train, having express and local service at the Hunts Point Station just a few blocks to the northeast. There's also local bus routes, including the BX six and the FBS BX six that run along Hunts Point Avenue and the BX forty-six nearby. In addition, the MTA has proposed adding Metro North Service at a new station at Hunts Point Avenue, just a few blocks away. Next slide, please. The Historic District lies within an R-six residentially zoned district, originally mapped in nineteen sixty-one. The R-six district facilitates a wide range of residential building types and permits an FAR of maximum two-point-four-three. The Historic District does not fall within the Hunts Point Special District. Next slide. The Historic District itself is comprised of forty-two semi-detached row houses on Monita Street between Garrison and Lafayette Avenues. According to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's report, the block was designed by architects James F. Meehan and Dalb and Cramborg, and was built from nineteen oh eight to nineteen oh nine, and is a remarkable example of the early twentieth-century development of the South Bronx's Hunts Point neighborhood. Next slide. The residential block shown here in some of these photos, with complete-facing rows of intact Renaissance Revival-style semi-detached houses, stands out from its primarily commercial and industrial setting due to its strong historic character and sense of place. Next slide. And so, the Department of City Planning staff is unaware of any conflict with the zoning resolution, projected public improvements, or any plans for development, growth, improvement, or renewal within the Historic District or surrounding area. That concludes this presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions for Justin? Okay, then, thank you, Justin, for the presentation, and we will now send this to a public hearing this coming Wednesday, the fifth of August.
Just a note for those who are following along at home, on the agenda heading, we have future certifications, which is what, which is a section of the agenda that we'll be starting now. These will be presented to the Commission today, and then also over the next few review sessions. As the Chair noted at the top of the meeting, the Department will not be certifying these projects formally until the Ular clocks restart, so the projects will be presented today, and then on September fourteenth, they will appear on the agenda for certification, but we will not go through another round of presentations for them. So, moving on, item number two is a presentation for future certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District Thirteen. Our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just want to confirm that the audio and video is okay?
Yes.
So, today, the, today's a private application by Mr. Munir Islam, seeking approval of a zoning map amendment to facilitate the development of a two-story commercial building at two-fourteen-thirty-two Hillside Avenue in the Queens Village neighborhood of Queens Community District Thirteen. The surrounding area is predominantly characterized by one- and two-family homes along the side streets to the north and south of Hillside Avenue. Fronting the north side of Hillside Avenue are predominantly multifamily residential buildings, and on the south, including the project area, are mixed-use ground-floor retail with two-story, second-story residential, community facility, and commercial buildings. The surrounding area, including the project area, has been Zoned R-two since nineteen sixty-one, living uses to single-family detached homes. There are C-one-two Commercial overlays mapped four blocks to the west on Hillside Avenue, and C-two-two mapped two blocks to the east on Hillside Avenue. Although the area is not serving any subway lines, the Q-one, the Q-fourty-three local bus routes and the X-sixty-eight express routes both have stops within one block of the proposed development site. The project area includes block one-zero-six-seven-three, lots eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and portions of three, the development site and fifteen. The proposed project area fronts the sides, the south side of Hillside Avenue between two-hundred-and-fifteenth Street and Vanderveer Street, and has a depth of hundred feet parallel to Hillside Avenue. The proposed development site consists of Lot Three, an approximately eleven-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot lot at the southwest corner of Hillside and Vanderveer Street. The development site was previously used as an automotive repair and sales facility pursuant to a BSA variance, but has since been vacant since that company acquired the site a few years ago. Lots eight through twelve are all improved by two-story mixed-use buildings with legal non-conforming ground-floor retail with second-story residential. Here is the aerial looking south towards the development site in, highlighted in red, the rest of the project area with the ground-floor retail, second-story residential, fronting Hillside Avenue. Above the photo's existing conditions, on the left, south view of the development site from Hillside Avenue, on the right, southwest view of the project area, looking into the western, see the eastern portion of the project area. Photo three on the left, looking rear of the project area, looking northwest. On the photo on the right, is looking from Hillside into Vanderveer Street with the development site on the left. Photo five and six above are looking on Hillside Avenue, looking northeast, northwest, In terms of the proposed development, you're proposing with facilitate development of a two-story commercial building with approximately ninety-three-hundred square feet of floor area. The ground floor would contain approximately sixty-nine-hundred, sixty-nine-hundred-square-foot retail pharmacy, and the second floor portion, partial second floor, would contain approximately twenty-four-hundred square-foot office, which is intended to support the applicant's onsite pharmacy, but also other off-site retail businesses. Five total permitted accessory parking spaces would be located, three at grade, and two located below grade, adjacent to the cellar. The parking would be accessed by new fifteen, excuse me, an existing fifteen-foot wide curvecut of Vanderveer Street. However, the loading berth would be accessed from Hillside Avenue, generally not ideal. This follows community input at the Community Board Thirteen's Land Use Committee, who preferred keeping the loading access away from the residential district north, excuse me, south of the proposed project area. Up here are the elevations showing the building coming out at twenty-seven feet, illustrating the partial second story looking at Hillside Avenue in the top portion, Vanderveer on the south, the lower portion. Here's just a illustrative rendering showing how the office would be laid upon the ground-floor To facilitate this development, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment establishing the C-two-three overlay on the existing R-two district. The overlay would also bring the existing legal non-conforming commercial uses into conformance and closer to compliance, while retaining the existing low-scale character of the surrounding area and reinforce the commercial character along Hillside Avenue. With this slide above, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Veloos?
Hi, thanks for the presentation, Scott. You mentioned that the applicant acquired this property a few years ago. Do you provide the information about what year it was acquired, and do we know what the intended end use is? I mean, actual tenant and actual tenancy?
I could follow up with the exact year. It was within the past five years. The applicant purchased this property with the intent of adding this pharmacy here. So, the owner is the applicant.
Okay, so the pharmacy's the end use in the second floor?
The proprietor of the pharmacy will locate his offices to support that business and other businesses in that office space.
Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, I'll just note that sometimes our larger projects and smaller projects can attract a lot of attention and controversy, but we think that this is just a great example of the type of project we welcome have come forward as part of our economic recovery, supporting a small business owner, and particularly one that is in a health-related field. And so, as Ryan had indicated, the Department will, oh, it's Oops, I'm sorry. Let me... Anna has her hand raised.
Yeah, sorry, in my awkward, around-the-corner way. Thank you. Yes, Scott, I just had a question about the last paragraph on the briefing sheet where you indicate that other areas have C12 and C22 commercial overlays. The choice here, the application here, is for a C23, and if you describe their plans for parking, it sounds like, I mean, it sounds like parking is the main difference, but that it doesn't really matter for this application. Is that correct? And in that case, why wouldn't we use one of the designations that's closer by?
Yeah, that's a good question. The, so yeah, the C23 allows for a waiver below 25 parking spaces, whereas the C12 would not allow. We were, we also were encouraging them to not need as much parking. We think it's okay for this area. We believe there's significant on-street parking available during peak hours. We also believe that the prior rezonies that were used to add commercial overlays were intended to encourage retail. It did not everywhere, and this is an area where we think the C23 would be more appropriate to encourage development for retail, but also not have such a high requirement for parking.
Okay. So this is a choice that staff is supportive of?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Scott. I just had one quick question. On your rendering, it seems on the second story, there's a series of wall-mounted light fixtures over a kind of horizontal panel. Is that an advertising signage panel, and is that consistent with the signage regulations? I wasn't quite sure what the intent was there.
Yeah, I mean, obviously illustrative, but you are allowed indirect lighting signage in a commercial overlay. There are square footage requirements. They're not required to show the location of the signage in those drawings, but they're indicative.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I do not see any other hands raised. And so, as Ryan had noted, on the 14th of September, these items will appear on the agenda for certification. We do not intend to do another presentation, but at that point, to have the department formally certify this item.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Item 3 on the agenda for presentation for future certification is a special permit and zoning text amendment in Manhattan Community District 5, and our presenter is Ezra Moser.
Hi. Good afternoon, commission. I'm just gonna, you know, briefly say hi before I get into the presentation because it seems to be a zero-sum relationship between my ability to have video on and, you know, my reception, so just wanted to greet you all. Good afternoon. Welcome back. I'm very happy to see everyone. Okay. Can we put into full screen, please, slideshow? Thank you. All right. So, next slide, please. So this is a joint application made by the Schubert Organization and Clarity LLC. The requested actions include a text amendment and a special permit, and the text amendment amends Section 81745, which grants a floor area bonus for the substantial rehabilitation of a listed theater in the theater sub-district of the special Midtown District. The special permit is requested under that same section, 81745, as amended, to authorize 119,000 square feet of bonus floor area in exchange for the substantial rehabilitation of the Court Theater, which is a listed theater. That 119,000 square foot bonus would be utilized in the new 263,000 square foot hotel development on the same zoning lot. I want to note for the commission that while this proposal originated in a very different pre-COVID era, the theater industry has been so hard-hit during the pandemic that we thought this would be appropriate to bring forward with all due alacrity. There's a deep concern over the future of the industry, which it goes without saying is a national treasure and a key piece of the city economy. So, so many of these theaters as well in the theater sub-district were built long before ADA requirements, and a key component of this proposal, as I will detail, is the extensive provision of ADA accessibility across all floors and for all audience amenities as well. So that would expand the range of patrons who can enjoy these performances. So very happy to present this. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the first two sections of the presentation are going to cover the theater and the proposed rehabilitation, and then the last third or so is going to discuss the proposed developments on the site, as well as the text amendment and findings. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. The development site is located mid-block on a block bounded by West 47th Street, West 48th Street, 6th Avenue, and 7th Avenue in Manhattan Community District 5. It's just east of the northerly end of the Times Square bowtie, which you can see in that green area on screen, and it's located within a high-density commercial area. It is located in the theater sub-district core, which is a sub-area of the theater sub-district, which itself is a sub-district of the special Midtown District. So there's a bit of a nesting doll effect there. Next slide, please. So as shown here on this tax map, the project area and the development site are coterminous, as you can see outlined in this dotted line, and it's part of a large 47,000 square foot merged zoning lot. So the parcels on the zoning lot are under four different ownerships. I'm going to review that in the next slide. Next slide, please. So the Schubert Organization, one of the applicants owns the Court Theater, which is seen here in a transparent red. Clarity LLC, which is the co-applicant, owns Lot 11, seen in yellow, and that lot is going to be developed with the hotel that utilizes the bonus floor area from this application. The McSam Corporation, which is owned by hotelier Sam Chang, they own lots 55 through 59 on the north half of the blue site, and then Highgate owns Lot 7, which is on the southerly portion of that blue site. Next slide, please. So these lots were all merged into one zoning lot as part of a complex real estate deal. For the purposes of the application, we divided them into three sites that you can see here: the Court Theater site, again in red, the Clarity site, aka the hotel owner site, which is in yellow, and then the McSam-Highgate site. We've grouped McSam-Highgate together because as part of the private agreement that merged these lots, Highgate, Lot 7, conveyed its excess as-of-right floor area to McSam, so lots 55 to 59, and McSam plans to use those excess air rights to construct a 273,000 square foot hotel on his portion of the site, so the northerly frontage. And I want to note, as you can see in that red dashed line, the substantial improvements to the Court Theater are being facilitated by the construction of a new annex space just to the west of the existing theater. This area of expansion is the area that's outlined in the dashed red line, and I will show plenty more detail on that later. Next slide, please. This slide more clearly shows the relationship between the existing Court Theater building and the proposed annex. The hashed area shows the existing theater, and then the dotted area shows the footprint of the proposed annex. Next slide, please. So this slide depicts the underlying zoning districts. It's primarily within a C6 5.5 district, which has a base FAR of 12, bonus pool up to 14.4, and it's partly within a C6 7T district, which has a FAR, a base FAR 14, bonus pool up to 16.8. The text amendment allows the bonus that's generated by the C6 7T portion of the site to be utilized on the Clarity site, again, hotel owner site in yellow, which is located in the C6 5.5 portion of the site. Next slide, please. So this slide depicts the proposed site plan with existing structures to remain in the lighter shades of gray. You can see it's like the top right and the bottom left corner of the zoning lot, and then the new development is in dark gray. So the new, the existing Court Theater building, you can see again at the kind of the top right portion of the zoning lot, is in lighter gray because it will remain, but directly to its left or west is the footprint of the annex structure, which is in dark gray because it's new construction. Directly to the south of the Court Theater complex is the new proposed hotel by Clarity in dark gray because, again, it's going to be a new development. At the top-left corner of the zoning lot, you see the McSam proposed hotel, again facing on 48th Street, and then directly to its rear is Highgate Hotel, which is going to remain in its current form. As I noted, it sold its excess development rights to McSam, and it is a 10-story hotel that's just going to continue to operate in its condition. Next slide, please. So this is a site photograph of the Court Theater taken from 48th Street, looking southwest. You can see the historic facade, although it's partly obscured by the scaffolding. Next slide, please. Here you can see the western flank of the Court Theater is viewed from 48th Street, looking southeast. It's a little bit difficult to tell here, but the area of the annex is going to be, you know, directly to the west of it, and you can see along the fencing, there's a slightly darker green patch over by that truck. That is in front of the area that will be part of the annex, and then everything else is part of the McSam site. I'll show more detail on the next slide. So next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this is more a panoramic view of the McSam portion of the McSam-Highgate site. So it encompasses virtually all of the fencing that you see in front of you, and it has been demolished, so it's a vacant site on the other side of that. And again, this is on 48th Street, looking due south, basically. So you have the vacant McSam site, and then directly behind that, the kind of beige-colored 10-story structure is Highgate's existing hotel. So again, that's going to remain in its current form, 10 stories, and then you can see to the left of that, at kind of behind the Court Theater, is the hotel site, which is the Clarity site. Construction is commencing on that. Next slide, please. So this shows the Clarity's hotel site viewed from 47th Street, looking northwest. So you can see that, you know, the facade is under construction. Next slide, please. So this is an excerpt of the zoning text from 81745 that shows what can qualify as substantial rehabilitation under the text. It's important to keep this in mind during the next section of the presentation. Very generally, a substantial rehabilitation consists of major structural changes for the purposes of improving a theater's design and commercial viability. This includes improvements that expand backstage capacity, audience and user comfort, historic restoration, and, as added by the applicant, as you can see underlined, improving ADA accessibility. The text does note as well that substantial rehabilitation does not include normal theater maintenance, painting, or improvements to the mechanical systems alone. Next slide, please. So before we jump into our walkthrough of the theater and the rehabilitation suite, it is important to note that the commission has only granted special permits under this section twice before, and the last one was for the Biltmore Theater in 2001. In order to assist the commission in the review of this proposal, DCP has requested the applicant prepare a third-party report compiled by theater design experts. This report assesses for the commission the significance of each individual improvement to the theater. The report also opines on whether and to what extent the theater rehabilitation meets the findings of Section 81745. The report is included in draft form in your briefing packets, and it will be officially submitted to the commission as testimony during the CPC stage. We've asked the applicant to self-refer copies of the draft version to the community board and borough president during public review in order to assist them with their review of the application. Next slide, please. So according to the applicant, the Court Theater suffers from inadequate back-of-house spaces suitable for modern productions, inadequate front-of-house support spaces, poor audience amenities, poor audience circulation, and limited ADA accessibility. I'll be giving a high-level overview of these issues, but am prepared to discuss details if you have questions. Additionally, detailed slides are located in the appendix. Next slide, please. So as I'll cover further in the next couple of slides, there's some issues with the dressing room, the stage wings, the stage door access, and the load-in door. According to the applicant, these inadequate back-of-house spaces limit the Court Theater's ability to accommodate modern theatrical and musical productions, particularly those with complex scenic installations, extensive props, and large casts. Next slide, please. There you go. Thank you. The dressing rooms are small, non-ADA compliant, and are wedged into a space that should ideally be part of the stage left wing. You can see the dressing rooms highlighted on the map in left, in red, and then you can see photos of them on the right. Additionally, there are no dedicated rehearsal spaces or chorus rooms, which are considered critical for musicals. Next slide, please. The stage wings, highlighted in yellow, are physically constrained, which limits the ability to prep and store large or complex scenic elements. Both wings as well have a number of obstructions that further limit their use. Next slide, please. The backstage load-in door is partially obstructed by cellar egress stairs, which makes the loading of large and complex scenery difficult, and you can see this in photograph on the right. It's highlighted. On the left, the stairs that are obstructing it are in purple. The staged load-in doors just below that were right around where it says 5' 8" inches. Next slide, please. So this shows the stage door access, which functions like an employee's-only entrance for performers and backstage staff. It's located at the rear of an egress court, and it's open to the elements, sloped, and very difficult to navigate, and it's particularly precarious during wintertime. Next slide, please. At the cellar level, the stage trap is small and constrained, limiting the complexity of scenery and props that it can house and deliver above to the stage. Additionally, the hair and wardrobe facilities, as well as performer restrooms, are cramped and inadequate for modern production. Next slide, please. So this photo here shows the inadequate wardrobe and hair facility, which is crammed into the stage trap space, which limits the functionality of both. Next slide, please. In addition, there's only one single-user restroom on the cellar level, which is not ADA accessible and is only one of two restroom facilities for actors and backstage staff. Next slide, please. This slide shows several of the back-of-house inadequacies in section view, which further serve to limit the range and scale productions that the court can accommodate. The rigging system, gridiron, and bridges are outdated, obsolete, and cannot support modern equipment loads. There are no elevator load-ins, so equipment and props have to be hoisted up to the bridges piece by piece. Additionally, as you can see kind of prominently in the center of this section, the air handler and duct systems obstruct much of the bridges, further limiting their capability. Next slide, please. The theater dates back to 1900 and suffers from small and inadequate front-of-house spaces, audience facilities, and a lack of accessibility for patrons with impaired mobility. The ticket lobby and box offices seen here are cramped, and the box office at 56 square feet is unable to sufficiently accommodate staff. The applicant notes that the box office is also not ADA accessible and that patrons with disabilities have to use a separate tray, which you can see to the left on the photo that's kind of centered here. The ADA tray is labeled. Next slide, please. So concession storage is mixed in with the audience coat check, and both are cramped and located in the cellar, requiring staff to carry supplies up and down patron stairs in order to stock the bars and stands on all three levels, which exacerbates bottleneck. Additionally, the applicant notes that there are few front-of-house office and support spaces, and there are no locker rooms for staff and no storage space for items involved in the theater's day-to-day operations, such as playbill, assisted listening devices, or removable chairs for patrons, you know, requiring wheelchair access. Next slide, please. Additionally, audience restroom facilities are inadequate in terms of number of fixtures, and they are located inconveniently on the cellar level, which is the level you can see at the bottom of the screen. I'd add that none of the restrooms are ADA compliant, and patrons who require ADA compliant restroom facilities have to use a portable restroom located in a side alley outside the theater, which you can see theater, which you can see highlighted in the top left of the screen. Next slide, please. These pictures show the two audience bars located on the ground floor and balcony level. Their inadequately small size and adjacency to stairs and circulation paths create bottlenecks because of queuing patrons. Next slide, please. Additionally, the Court Theater suffers from circulation issues, including narrow stairways, bottleneck conditions, and no ADA access to the upper levels. So there's only a single-access stair between the ground floor with over five hundred seats and the two balcony levels, which have five hundred forty-seven seats in total. So essentially, there is a single-user access stair, which you can see of those three photos, the one on the bottom somewhat centered. That single stair connects these levels and over a thousand patrons. Additionally, separate dead-end stairs provide access from the ground level to the restrooms on the cellar level and are narrow and inadequate for the thousand-plus patrons using them. These two stairs are depicted in the top two pictures, at forty-three and forty-six inches wide respectively. So additionally, on the diagrams, on the bottom one, you can see an area that's circled in red where there's a bottleneck between the single-access stair that brings users from the ground floor to the upper levels, the ground-floor bar, which is highlighted in yellow, and then the men's room cellar-access stair on the right. You can see how it's a very narrow space and how queuing patrons can exacerbate, you know, the circulation from one set of stairs to the other. And as I just mentioned, there are no elevators in the Court Theater and as a result, there is no ADA access to either of the balcony levels or to the lower-level restrooms. Next slide, please. So the applicant is proposing to renovate the existing parts of the theater and construct a new annex, which will substantially improve the theater's operations, capacity, and commercial viability. In addition, their upgrades include the historic restoration of the theater's interior. So generally, these combined improvements will result in upgraded back-of-house spaces for modern productions, upgraded front-of-house support spaces, improved audience amenities and accessibility, and improved audience circulation. Overarchingly, this will provide the ability to host musicals. They are also improving seating to be more comfortable and spacious. Next slide, please. So the annex will be a thirty-five-foot-wide, five-story westward enlargement of the existing Court Theater building, occupying an approximately three thousand one hundred and sixty-three square foot footprint and will contain about fourteen thousand eight hundred square feet of floor area, which actually comes out to about nineteen thousand gross square feet, including below-grade spaces. The annex would be connected to the existing Court Theater building at every level, including the cellar, so that it will expand the functional footprint of each floor. Next slide, please. So this shows how the annex is connected to the existing theater building at the ground floor and how it dramatically expands the front-of-house space, back-of-house space, front-of-house is shown in green, back-of-house in yellow, as well as the audience amenity spaces. Vertical circulation will be provided by a staircase at the north end of the annex structure, which is visible just under the red arrow that says "proposed annex." And there's an additional new circulation core at the rear of the building in the yellow portion, the back-of-house portion, just below the elevator, which you can see highlighted in white. And so that elevator is, you know, front-of-house facing. Next slide, please. So this shows the annex and the existing theater building in elevation view, both very clearly highlighted. Next slide, please. So this shows the dressing rooms and the new wardrobe, hair, and wig facilities. In the existing conditions, which are shown stacked on the far right of these two sets of images, there are only four levels for dressing rooms and these are obviously highlighted in red. By expanding the back-of-house footprint and adding new levels for back-of-house programming, the proposed annex, which this proposed condition, including the annex, is seen on the near right, which is more or less centered. This will more than double the area dedicated to dressing rooms from sixteen hundred square feet to over thirty-seven hundred. Additionally, the annex will provide new dedicated wardrobe and hair/wig spaces, which you can see in yellow on the balcony one and balcony two levels. Next slide, please. Besides expanded dressing rooms, the stage-left wing, seen in yellow, will be doubled in size and the existing obstructions will be removed. Additionally, on the far-right side of the screen, the load-in door, which is used for the delivery of scenic elements, will be weatherproofed and will receive a vestibule, which will allow it to serve as temporary storage space for props as well. Also, as I'll show in greater detail on the next slide, the new stage-door access, which again can be thought of as the employees-only entrance, will be provided from within the building directly to the cellar level. You can see where it exits to the street in purple at the top of the diagram on the left. Next slide, please. So here on the cellar level, you can better see that improved stage-door access and how it brings staff directly backstage. The plenum will be removed in order to allow the stage trap, shown in yellow, to expand significantly. Also, as a result, the orchestra pit, shown in white just above the stage trap, will be recovered, which will allow for musical productions. Importantly, new expanded back-of-house restroom facilities will be provided for staff and cast, including a dedicated ADA-accessible unisex restroom. Back-of-house, the number of restroom fixtures will be expanded from one to nine, with two being ADA accessible. Next slide, please. So the rigging system and gridiron will be replaced and modernized to accommodate contemporary scenery elements and lighting equipment. They are expanding and upgrading the bridges to modernize them and will give them elevator load-ins, so no more hoisting equipment and scenery up to them. They're also removing the air handler from the stage-right bridge, which doubles its size and allows for the staging of more complex electronic equipment suitable for modern productions. Again, these features will dramatically expand the types of performances that the theater can accommodate. Next slide, please. So as indicated, a key back-of-house upgrade is that the annex's development will facilitate the creation of an entire new floor dedicated to rehearsal space plus a chorus room. This will allow the theater to host more complex productions and in particular, musical theater. Next slide, please. So the applicant is making a series of substantial improvements to the front-of-house spaces and audience amenities as well. As seen here, they're proposing to enlarge the box office and to create a dedicated treasurer's room and make the ticket window ADA accessible. Next slide, please. So the applicant proposes to dramatically expand the number of restrooms for audience members from twenty-three to forty-eight fixtures, thirteen of which will be ADA accessible, and these will be distributed across multiple floors of the annex instead of being crowded into the cellar. The applicant is also quadrupling the amount of audience lounge space and expanding and relocating concession areas in order to improve circulation and audience experience. All of these concession and lounge spaces will be ADA accessible via the new elevator core, which you can see in blue, kind of midway to two-thirds of the way down each level. In addition to the new elevator core, the applicant proposes a new streamlined vertical circulation corridor in the annex, which you can see at the top corner of the annex space in the diagram that's stacked, it's also highlighted in blue. Although not depicted here, I'd like to also note that the applicant is creating a new enlarged, dedicated audience coatroom, a relocated, enlarged, and fully outfitted concession storage facility, new office and support spaces for front-of-house staff, and then new locker rooms for custodial staff and secure storage closets for items like playbills, assisted listening devices, cleaning supplies, and removable chairs for patrons with wheelchairs. As I noted earlier, they're also replacing and reorganizing the audience seating to be more comfortable and spacious and they may actually be losing seats in the process of doing that. Next slide, please. So the applicant is restoring the historic interior as well as the historic facade. Here's an elevation of the theater complex in the proposed conditions and as you'll note, the applicant is proposing new exterior signage. Next slide, please. This slide shows the details of the interior and exterior historic restoration and I would note for the commission that according to the zoning text, historic restoration does count as part of the scope of substantial rehabilitation. Next slide, please. So as we noted, the applicant is proposing a two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-three square foot hotel, which will utilize a hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-eight square feet of bonus floor area, which is generated by the Court Theater's substantial rehabilitation. This elevation depicts the proposed hotel, the one that will use this bonus floor area, which will rise to forty-nine stories or five-hundred-and-twenty-four feet. In this elevation, we are on Forty-seventh Street, which is the southern side of the site, looking north. You can see the existing hotel directly next to it in gray. This hotel is part of the McSam Highgate portion of the lot and as I noted, will remain in its current condition. Next slide, please. Here you can see the north side of the site in elevation viewed from Forty-Eighth Street looking south and you can see the Court Theater at the bottom left of the site. Again, the site is delineated by the dotted line. So you can see the Court Theater and then directly to the right of that, you can see the annex addition also in elevation view. Directly next to that is the McSam development. This is to the west of the site. And the McSam development is proposed to be thirty-four stories, which comes out to just over three-hundred-and-thirty-one feet. Next slide, please. So the McSam group has filed an NB permit for a building which corresponds with the elevation I just showed you. However, we've included the depicted language on the drawing note to permit flexibility for the McSam building to allow them to develop with any massing that complies with the special Midtown District as of right heightened setback regulations, which as the note implies, can be found in Sections eighty-one twenty-six and eighty-one twenty-seven inclusive. So we're including this language because the McSam site, by virtue of being part of the same zoning lot as the Court, is subject to the requested special permit and this special permit does have findings that relate to bulk, distribution of bulk, and light and air, which I'll review in a couple of slides. So this note indicates that we'd be okay with the McSam building potentially changing its massing from what was depicted illustratively in the previous slide, permitted that it complies with the applicable as-of-right heightened setback regulations. Next slide, please. So the text amendment component's application changes two areas of Section eighty-one seven forty-five. The first set of changes, which you can see here, clarify what type of work can qualify as a substantial rehabilitation to the theater. This adds clarity that many of the items on the applicant's proposed scope of work will qualify. Next slide, please. The second area of change concerns the distribution of bonus floor area across the zoning lot. As I noted in an earlier slide, their site is split between zoning districts with different maximum FARs and so the text then would give the commission the ability to permit bonus floor area generated by the higher FAR district to be utilized on a development located in the lower FAR district. It applies strictly to lots that are partly located in a C-six-five-point-five district, of which there is only one. So in effect, this would allow the full a hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-square-foot bonus, which is generated by the Court's improvement, to be incorporated in the proposed hotel on the Clarity site. Next slide, please. So these outline the conditions for substantial rehabilitation and we reviewed some of them earlier that basically, you know, it consists of work that includes major structural changes for the purposes of improving a theater's design and commercial viability for legitimate theater uses or historic restoration of the interior of a theater, which is designated as interior landmark, as is the case of the Court. It can include, without limitations, expanding stage wings, reraking the orchestra, increasing rehearsal, dressing room, or lobby and ancillary spaces, improving accessibility beyond applicable legal requirements, or historic reservation. You know, one of the things they note, again, that I flagged earlier, is that it does not mean normal theater maintenance, painting, or improvements to mechanical systems alone. There are a series of timing commitment-related qualifications and then, next slide, please, for the last slide, I will briefly read over the findings. So the findings for this section are how and to what extent the proposed rehabilitation will improve the theater's suitability for use as a legitimate theater, how the proposed rehabilitation will contribute towards satisfying the needs of the theater's sub-districts, which I can speak to in a second, whether the bonus floor area will unduly increase the bulk of any development or enlargement, density of population or intensity of use, or any block to the detriment of occupants of buildings on the block of the surrounding area, and whether the distribution and location of such floor area bonus will adversely affect the surrounding area by restricting light and air or otherwise impair the essential character or future development of the surrounding area. And I do want to note for the commission that the theater sub-district's purpose, as it relates to Section Two, is to preserve and protect the character of the sub-district as a cultural, theatrical, and entertainment showcase, as well as to help ensure a secure basis for the useful cluster of shops, restaurants, and related amusement activities in the area. And so to that end, special incentives and controls are provided for the preservation and rehabilitation of existing theaters and there are certain restrictions on ground-floor uses and bulk and sign provisions to preserve its special character. And with that, that's the conclusion of the presentation. Any questions?
I'll note that this was a lengthy presentation. It is a special permit that is not applied for that frequently and for many of us on the commission, it's the first time that we are seeing a special permit of this type. There's an awful lot going on in a very small geography. So I'll start with you, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was very good. I think the visuals, each one of them said a thousand words about the needs of the theater. My first question is, and I don't know whether you know, but do those back-of-house spaces, especially the ones on the lower level, do they have sprinkler systems?
I do not know. I can ask the applicant about that. That's a good question.
My other question, which I have a text here, this is a complex transaction and in the text, it mentions the unused base floor area, approximately eighty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-nine square feet of the base floor area attributable to the development site will not be used because it's owned by the Rockefeller Group, which sold the parcel that is now the McSam Highgate site to the current owners. And it says that this floor area, the eighty-two-thousand-two-fifty-nine, would be transferred off the zoning lot pursuant to Section eighty-one seven four four, in the event that the proposed, the area bonus, the floor area bonus before us is granted. My question is, where does that eighty-two-thousand-two-fifty-nine reside if it's transferred off of the zoning lot? Where does it reside?
So as currently before you, you know, thank you for the very observant, you know, note of this and question. That eighty-two-thousand square feet is currently located on the zoning lot but as per the note on the drawings, this is basically reserving it to be transferred off-site. So it's securing that it will not be used on the zoning lot in any development. When Rockefeller sold the site to the McSam Group, as well as Highgate, I guess the developers did not need all of this eighty-two-thousand square feet or, and so in order to provide, you know, clarity as to what would be built on-site, Schubert has essentially said that it would be transferred to a receiving site via a kind of standard theater sub-district transfer cert, which allows, you know, lots with listed theaters to transfer their excess development rights to an eligible receiving site anywhere within the theater sub-district. So the future intention is that that eighty-two-thousand square feet will be transferred off-site via certification.
But would ultimately, if it's utilized, it would be somewhere within the theater district?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Commissioner Ron Prashad.
Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question. What's the capacity of the theater or what is the proposed capacity?
I do not know the exact proposed capacity because they are going to be removing seats as far as I understand, but I will clarify with the applicant if they have, if they're more honed in about the number of seats that will be after the renovation. I'm about to check but I believe that it's one-thousand-and-sixty-three seats is the current capacity. It's something just over one-thousand. Let me pull up very quickly.
Yeah, because they're designing all these ADA bathrooms but usually you design it based on also number of occupants, right? So I'm just curious.
Yes, one-thousand-one-hundred-and-two seats currently. Yes, one thousand one hundred and two seats currently.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Ron Prashad?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, then Commissioner Eleven.
Uh, yes, thank you, Ezra. Thank you for a very detailed presentation. It's kind of a miracle that the Court Theater has survived as an operating theater in these conditions for so long. It's really quite something to see the conditions that we don't experience as audience members. And I certainly fully support the notion of getting this application moving in order to help Broadway come back. But following up on Commissioner Knuckles' line of inquiry here, I start with a basic question about the size of the development site, because I think we have to acknowledge what is being asked here is that we craft a bonus that happens to achieve the number of, you know, an appropriate value of square footage, additional F A R, that the Schuberts can sell to Clarity in order to fund the rehabilitation of the Court Theater. That may very well be an appropriate thing to do, but I think we just have to recognize to ourselves that that's really the issue on the table here, and that the development site is, in fact, really twice the size that it needs to be. The development site is really the Court Theater and the Clarity Hotel site. As you've indicated, the McSam thing is kind of separate and wouldn't necessarily have to be part of this, but it does have the effect of generating a larger bonus, which facilitates this transaction. So it brings me to wanting to have some advice as we get deeper into the public discussion here of how we evaluate the bonus. Here again, we've got the dilemma that the text instructs the planning commission to determine whether the amount of the bonus is appropriate. They're asking for the full amount, which is one hundred and nineteen thousand square feet, but we don't necessarily, it's for us to decide if that's the appropriate amount. But then the findings that we're supposed to apply are all qualitative, not quantitative. And we understand that that's really how zoning works, because we don't sell zoning, but in fact, we are selling zoning. So when this comes back eventually for public hearing, I will look forward to a larger discussion about that issue and advice from city planning staff about how we should look at it. And I'd also, this prompted me to go look at the Giltmore application, which actually happened just as I was beginning to get involved in this kind of work. So I do have experienced one of, one of these applications. And that one similarly involved a development site that was larger to begin with, because it included the Firehouse at the corner of Forty-eighth and Eighth, but ultimately, as a result of public review, the Firehouse was taken out of the development site, and the bonus was not, the applicant had originally wanted the lot area of the Firehouse, which is owned by the city, to contribute to the amount of the bonus, and that was ultimately removed. So I'm wondering how that will relate to this application. So that's not so much a question as just observation, and I'll be interested in hearing how this makes its way through the public review process.
Thank you, Commissioner Eleven. To your first point, I think the question that you posed is part of why we reached out to get an outside expert report on this, because of wanting to get comfort about the extent of the, of the renovations. Oh, I guess there's one, one tiny follow-up. If we could have a map of the remaining receiving sites, I mean, I know this is something that, that the Schuber organization spends a lot of time thinking about, where in the theater sub-district unused theater development rights are potentially usable, that would be useful information.
Absolutely.
Okay, we next have Commissioner Capelli.
Hello there. Just a quick question about the length of construction, the phase, and how long each phase is going to take, or, or things going to be occurring simultaneously?
Um, so my understanding is that the, the site that's using the bonus floor area, it's under construction already, and the rehabilitation work will obviously not start construction until after the application has been approved. It could take anywhere from two to four years. In the legal documents, we're giving forty-eight months to fully finish everything in order to achieve the permanent C of O. So that's kind of seen as the, the longest possible period. But from talking to the applicants, it seems that it could be done within two.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Ezra. I had sort of similar questions to Commissioner Eleven, actually. And, I mean, first of all, it does seem pretty remarkable that with the theater industry on its knees and the hotel business not far behind, that somebody's actually planning a major theater hotel development. So I suppose that's a good thing. But I was also a little bit unclear about the numbers, and I guess I should spend the time to try and do the math myself, but, I mean, we seem to be doing two things. One is just a transfer of air rights, and one is a bonus. And I'm wondering if you were to consider only the Clarity Site, for example, what the additional development right would be, rather than the sort of broader encompassing all the sites. And I'm also a bit puzzled about the fact that the Clarity Site is like already under construction, and is that sort of assuming that, will we approve this, or are they doing that as a right? And, you know, sort of how does, how do those numbers work? Those are just some things that I'm not quite clear about. And then I had another sort of minor comment, a question about the theater, and in the analysis of the theater's deficiencies, the loading for the back-of-house seemed to be a big problem. And, I mean, I assume these people know what they're doing, but it looks to me as though they haven't really solved that problem. They've still got a very restricted access to, for bringing in scenery. They're talking about doing musical productions, which tend to be very heavy on large scenery. I just don't see how they're going to get it all in and out down that little alleyway with a staircase in the way, but that's probably their business.
Both very good questions. Yeah, I can ask them to present further information on the, the logistics of the new loading door and vestibule and all that for the CPC period. And as to the first question, it's a very, very good and complex question. I would note that there is no transfer of development rights associated with this application. They are noting that that will happen at some point in the future, but by providing the note that, you know, basically, the note in the drawing say that that eighty-two thousand square feet will not be used on-site, so it's basically being held and stifened off for later transfer. So it will not be incorporated anywhere on the site unless there is a modification to the special permit to change that note. So, you know, the special permit generates this bonus floor area, and then it can be used on the same zoning lot. Now, as to your question about how the Clarity Site is developing, it's using currently as-of-right floor area, and their, kind of their, what you could call their contingency plan, is that if the bonus is not granted, or if it's not granted in the full amount requested, they would use that eighty-two thousand square feet, they would change their application, or I guess if it was not granted, it wouldn't be, you know, used at all. So they would, they would then incorporate the eighty-two thousand into Clarity Site to make up for the bonus. So it's very complex, and I can definitely have the applicant speak to it in greater detail if you want. I am quite familiar with it. But, yeah, they're basically using as-of-right development rights to build so far, and then, yeah, once the bonus floor area is granted, then everything can essentially develop up to the amount that it's proposed to, and then that eighty-two thousand square feet is basically being parked on the site to be sent off-site later.
And, and if that eighty-two thousand is used elsewhere, does that then come back as a U L A P action?
It's a certification, but it is a commission certification, so it will be brought to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners wanting to raise their hands? Okay, then, as with the prior item, we will note this on the agenda for a review session on the fourteenth of September, and without additional presentation, the department will certify it at that point. Thank you, Ezra. Thanks for the clarity, and I think as Vice Chair Knuckles said, the pictures were extraordinarily compelling.
Great, thank you.
Hey, moving on to item number four on the agenda, this is a non-U L A P referral, which we are going to actually refer out, for a modification to a previously approved authorization in Brooklyn Community District Twelve. Our presenter is Karina Liang.
Hi.
Here we go.
I'm just waiting for her.
Here we go.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application by Maimonides Medical Center for a minor modification to the site plan for a previously approved large-scale community facility development authorization. This application would facilitate the development of enlargements totaling approximately sixty-five hundred square feet of community facility space at Maimonides Medical Center in Borough Park, Brooklyn, Community District Twelve. Maimonides Medical Center is a seven-hundred-bed nonprofit teaching hospital located about a half-mile south of Greenwood Cemetery, roughly bounded by Ninth Avenue to the west, Forty-seventh Street to the north, Port Hamilton Parkway to the east, and Forty-ninth Street to the south. It was established in nineteen forty-seven, when two hospitals merged, and has grown significantly since then. Maimonides is a major employer in the area, with fifty-nine hundred employees at the hospital alone, and is also a major medical care provider as well, with forty-three thousand inpatients and eight thousand babies delivered each year. Its pediatric emergency department handles thirty-five thousand child patients each year, and has the only dedicated pediatric trauma center in Brooklyn. Maimonides is located in the mid-density residential neighborhood with primarily two six-story buildings and commercial corridors along Eighth Avenue, Port Hamilton Parkway, and New Utrecht Avenue. Maimonides is part of a large cluster, or a cluster of large institutional uses in the area, which also includes a public middle school and nursing home immediately adjacent to the hospital, and then a few blocks south on Port Hamilton Parkway, there's another large school and an active monastery. The large-scale development, which is outlined here in green, spans five tax blocks. The proposed additions would be to building located within the area aligned in red. The area is owned R six, with generally C one and C two overlays on the retail corridors, which have been in place since nineteen sixty-one. R six zoning allows community facility uses at four-point-eight F A R, with seventy percent lot coverage on corner locks and sixty-five percent lot coverage on interior and through locks. The area is served by the D train, quarter-mile east, and two local bus routes. There have been a number of previous land use actions as Maimonides has grown, starting with a large scale in nineteen sixty-seven, in which authorizations were granted for floor area and lot coverage distribution, yard waivers, and parking distribution. There have since been additional authorizations and special permits, minor modifications, and revocable consents for bridges and tunnels. The B S A also granted variances for lot coverage, height, and setback in two thousand and three. The most recent land use action was in twenty fourteen, when the commission approved a minor modification for a change to the large-scale boundaries, and removed some prior authorizations for a building that was no longer planned. So this is the large-scale site plan that had been approved in twenty fourteen, in that twenty fourteen minor modification, which facilitated a new seven-story medical building and parking garage on Parcel E over at the west end of the campus. The large-scale has a total lot area of approximately three hundred thousand square feet, which allows for one-point-four million square feet of community facility floor area and two-hundred-and-four thousand, six-hundred square feet of lot coverage. There's about four hundred thousand square feet of floor area and twelve hundred square feet of lot coverage remaining under the current R six zoning. The applicant's proposing five additions to the Eisenstadt Building on Parcel S, which are shown here in dark gray. These additions total approximately sixty-five hundred square feet, and would increase lot coverage by one-hundred-and-eighty-five square feet due to a provision in the zoning resolution that excludes community facility users under twenty-three feet high from lot coverage calculations within non-contextual residential districts. The bird's-eye views on the right show current conditions, with the corresponding site plan view on the left. Locations A, B, and C would each have one-story additions that directly support an expanded and modernized pediatric emergency department. Currently, the pediatric E R is located in a brick building across Tenth Avenue, which you can see in the bottom right of image two. And lastly, the additions at D and E will be supporting circulation. Now I'll walk through the before and after drawings of each of the proposed additions. So here's a view of location A on Forty-Ninth Street. Currently, this is a courtyard that houses mechanical equipment and trailers. The applicant's proposing a thirty-seven hundred square foot addition in this courtyard that would house part of the new pediatric E R. Location B over at Forty-Ninth Street and Tenth Avenue currently has a small yard and public entrance to the Eisenstadt Building. The addition here would be a walk-in entrance for the new pediatric emergency department, and would be approximately eight hundred square feet. Location C is on the north side of the Eisenstadt Building facing Forty-Eighth Street. There's currently a very small side yard and service doors here. A one-hundred-square-foot ambulance drop-off for the pediatric E R would be located here. Then going back to Forty-Ninth Street and looking north, you have the Eisenstadt Building on the left, and a three-story building that bridges over Tenth Avenue on the right. There's a small existing connection between these two buildings, but there's still interstitial space that's not being utilized. The applicant's proposing a three-story addition at location D that would fill in some of the gap around the existing connection to facilitate circulation between the adjacent buildings. This would add about four hundred and fifty square feet of floor area and one-hundred-and-eighty-five square feet of lot coverage. The last proposed addition is at this, is at location E on top of the Eisenstadt Building, which would be an elevator and machine room that adds approximately four hundred square feet of floor area. So in summary, this is a minor modification to the Maimonides large-scale community facility development that would increase the floor area by approximately six hundred, or sixty-five hundred square feet, and increase lot coverage by one-hundred-and-eighty-five square feet. These increases do not require any further authorizations or special permits, and the proposed developments comply with all others zoning regulations. And I'll take any questions you have.
Chair, like, I, I think you're still on mute.
I knew that would happen. Sorry about that. Okay, Commissioner Deloos.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. I'm just wondering what kind of community outreach has already happened for the adjacent community for the proposals?
Sixty-five hundred square feet.
Um, I can, I can definitely ask the applicant to speak to that. I know, like, in the immediately surrounded area around the addition is all within the large-scale area, but I can, I know the applicant has spoken to the community board about it, but I can ask them if they've done any other outreach to the neighbors. And then we'll get back to you.
Any other raised hands? Okay, then, as this is a non-U L A P item, we will be acting on it today, so we will refer to the community board for forty-five days.
Thank you.
Hey, next item on the agenda, item number five, is a city council modification scope determination for the Grand Avenue and Pacific Street rezoning, which was a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Eight. Here to describe the modification is Injun. is Injun.
Good afternoon. This is a city council modification that's returning to the Commission for the Grand and Pacific rezoning, which is a rezoning from M-one-one to R-seven DC-two-four. At the public hearing, the Commission heard from the applicant and the community board. The community board and Borough President have previously voted to disapprove this application with conditions. Next slide, please. The applicant proposed, and the CPC approved, a rezoning from M-one-one to R-seven DC-two-four, mapping MIH options one and two over the project area. You can see that map in the center. On April twenty-second, twenty-twenty, the Committee of the whole of the City Council voted to modify the application in the following ways: changing from an M-one-one district to an R-seven-A district south of Pacific Street on a non-applicant-owned site while maintaining the R-seven-D district north of Pacific Street. So you can see that on the map on the right. And then establishing within the proposed R-seven-A district a C-two-four district. Next slide, please. And removing option two of the mandatory inclusionary housing program, mapping only option one over the entire rezoning area. Next slide, please. In accordance with Section one-ninety-seven DD of the New York City Charter, the Department has determined that the City Council's proposed modifications are within scope and raise no land use or environmental issues requiring further review. I'm happy to take any questions.
A note on this, that while the Department believes that the changes to create the little island of rezoning are, we would have preferred that it not be cut out, it is nonetheless within scope. Any discussion from Commissioners? Commissioner Deloos?
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a rationale provided by the council, not that they need to, but why they brought it down to an R-seven-A right from R-seven-D across the street?
Um, the modification was in keeping with the community board's recommendations and the Borough President's recommendations, and the community board's stance is that for, so for the applicant-owned sites, they've come to a separate agreement outside of this rezoning for specific uses on the ground floor, and without that agreement with the non-applicant-owned sites, they would prefer a lower density.
I'd actually state it a little bit more directly, which is that as we approach rezonings, we look at what we think are reasonable boundaries, and this instance in particular, frontage along Atlantic Avenue, which is a major thoroughfare and a very wide avenue, but there are many who would prefer case-by-case U-LARPs rather than a broader rezoning, and I think that that is why, what may have been at issue here.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Bernie?
Um, thank you. I just wanted to comment that I seem to remember when we saw this before, that I'd made some comments about that, asking whether they would do something about that sort of dog's breakfast they have on the roof, and tidy it up and redesign it, and I'm just disappointed to note that they haven't done that. So, it's not your fault, Amy, I know, I'm not holding issue, but it's disappointing.
It's noted, then, also your use of one of my favorite Britishisms of a dog's breakfast. Now, usually, if we were, let me just check to see it. Oh, yes, Commissioner Deloos.
That's the first time I heard a dog's breakfast, but I'll, I'll look it up. The, I, I, I think another way to frame what the council did was that, you know, there's been a, there's been a longstanding discussion in this community board about specifically trying to have light industrial uses and, and quite honestly, requiring it, right? And I know that there's a difference of opinion about incentivizing versus requiring, and so I think that it has to do with that as well.
Very much so. A philosophical difference about the value of flexible zoning that can react to changes in the economy versus a very strict management of mandating very specific uses. Let me check once again to see if others. Okay, so we are going to have to do something a little bit differently. Were we in person, I would ask for an assent by show of hands to send a letter to the council noting that their modifications are within scope. Since we are virtual, I'm just going to ask for As and Ns, and so all those who believe that this is within scope, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the letter will be sent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
All right. Moving on to item six, which is also a city council modification scope determination. This is for the Fifty-Second Street rezoning, a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens, Community District Two. The city council proposes to modify the MIH from both options one and two to just option one. Staff believes that this modification is within scope.
Any Commissioners wanting to be heard on this? Okay, we will follow the same procedure of those who support sending the council a letter, letting them know that the modification is in scope. Ayes?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll send the letter. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to future votes. So scheduled for a decision on August fifth, this coming Wednesday, eighty-six Ridgecrest Avenue and Six Hilltop Road in Staten Island, Manhattan Street, seven-eighteen Bloomingdale Road, three-sixty-one Ocean Terrace, one-forty-five Cromwell, and two-seventeen and two-nineteen Vineland Avenue. All of these are in Staten Island, in either Hillside, Snad, or South Richmond actions. Also for, I'll take a break and see if anybody, if you need to interrupt me, you can also raise your hand if there's any comment on any of the things I'm reading. Also for future vote, scheduling for decision on August nineteenth is the Beth Hamadras Hagadul Synagogue, a landmark decision in Manhattan, Community District Three. For post-hearing follow-ups, we have the Industry City suite of actions in Brooklyn Community District Seven. I see that Commissioner Deloos has raised her hand, and I believe that is to note, Commissioner Deloos, that you are excused.
That's correct.
And so if you want to just turn off your, your mic and camera, that will suffice. And we have Connie Chan to present on Industry City.
Great, thank you, Ryan. So I'll get started while the deck is being prepared. This is a follow-up to the public hearing, which was held on Wednesday, February nineteenth, with the four proposed land use actions related to the Industry City application. This post-hearing follow-up session was originally scheduled for March sixteenth, which was the day that the mayor issued an executive order suspending U-LARP, so I'm happy to be here and pick up where we left off in this frame. If we can have the full screen mode, that would be great. Thank you. Next slide. So here is a summary of the project overview. Next slide. First, I'll provide a summary of some additional information that was provided by the applicant following the public hearing in February. Then I'll provide some agency responses, and finally, I will provide an overview of the Borough President's recommendation. Next slide. Before I provide information that the applicant submitted in response to the request for more information about the proposed hotel use, I want to remind the Commission that the applicant stated during the public hearing that while the proposed actions include a hotel use, the community board and council member have expressed their preference to remove hotels from the proposed development when it comes before the City Council, and the applicant agreed to accede to that request. However, because the hotel use is part of the proposed actions that are currently under consideration by the Commission, the applicant provided the additional information to provide some more context on that part of the application. Next slide. As you may recall, the proposed development includes approximately two-hundred-eighty-seven-thousand square feet of hotel use, which would include four-hundred-twenty hotel rooms out of a total of six-point-six million square feet. This represents four percent of the space at the proposed development, which is approximately one hotel room per sixteen-thousand square feet of development. While there was limited availability of information on the square footages of specific uses at other innovation districts, the applicant did state that at the Philadelphia Innovation District, there are two-hundred-and-twelve hotel rooms for approximately seven million square feet of development. This is approximately one hotel room per thirty-three thousand square feet. Next slide. The applicant also provided more information about the availability of hotels within ZIP codes one-one-two-two-zero and one-one-two-three-two, which are a rough approximation of the community district boundaries. There are eleven hotels that have a total of seven-hundred-eighty-eight rooms, as shown in the map above. None of these hotels have substantial conference facilities. The applicant was not able to confirm specifically which of these eleven hotels have been or currently being used as homeless shelters. However, the applicant did provide copy of media coverage from two thousand and eighteen in the Village Voice that documented the conversion of six local hotels for use as homeless shelters within the previous two years. These were reported to be primarily clustered along Fourth Avenue between Twenty-second and Thirty-Ninth Streets. That area is roughly highlighted in yellow with Industry City shaded in red. However, we cannot say that it is those specific hotels within that cluster that were referenced in the article. Next slide. In response to the community board's request that waterfront regulations be made applicable, the applicant has provided clarity on the purpose and impact of the special district text, which proposes to make such regulations inapplicable. Next slide. Uh, here's a slide that shows the four zoning lots that comprise the project area in the context of the broader waterfront. Each of the zoning lots is outlined in red and numbered. As you can see, zoning lots one, two, and three are not located directly on the waterfront, and they're separated from the waterfront by mapped streets and by property. One of the zoning lots, which is zoning lot number four, is located on a waterfront block and has a limited portion that is adjacent to the waterfront, and we'll take a closer look at this portion of the zoning lot shortly. Next slide. So in yellow is the area that we will look at. Next slide. So here's a diagram of that portion of zoning lot four, which is closest to the waterfront at the terminus of Thirty-Ninth Street. Next slide. Thirty-Ninth Street is shown in brown, which runs along the top-right corner of this image. The applicant's property line is shown in red, and you can see the footprints of buildings twenty-four and twenty-five, which are closest to the water in light yellow. The areas in shaded brown are city-owned property. This is comprised of a vacant area of land along the harbor in between the applicant's property and the harbor, in addition to Thirty-Ninth Street, which is a public right-of-way. The applicant's proposed special district text would make Article Six, Chapter Two, inapplicable within the special district. Article Six, Chapter Two are the waterfront regulations. There are two areas that this proposed text would impact. The first relates to waterfront public access areas and visual corridors, and the second relates to bulk regulations, and so I will explain how the proposed special district text that makes the waterfront regulations inapplicable does not result in a substantive change to the proposed development. So first, with respect to waterfront public access areas and visual corridors, Section sixty-two fifty-two of the zoning resolution states that waterfront public access areas shall be provided for all waterfront zoning lots with a lot area of at least ten thousand square feet and a shoreline of a hundred feet, in addition to some other criteria. Industry City's waterfront zoning lot abuts a basin that is approximately fifty feet wide in between two piers. Next slide. It does not abut the New York Harbor itself and therefore does not meet the one-hundred-foot shoreline requirement. As a result of the geometry of the zoning lot, in relation to the shoreline, a waterfront public access area or visual corridor would not be required in order to pull building permits on this zoning lot. However, Section sixty-two eight-eleven of the zoning resolution would normally require that a ministerial chairperson certification be obtained prior to issuance of a building permit on this waterfront block. This would document that no waterfront public access area or visual corridor requirement is applicable as the development is exempt pursuant to Section sixty-two fifty-two. The change effectuated by the applicant's proposal to have waterfront regulations be inapplicable in the proposed special district would not result in the reduction or waiver of the provision of any waterfront public access area or visual corridor. Because the site geometry that makes public access and visual corridor requirements inapplicable was reviewed during the application process for the proposed actions that are currently under review, agency staff deemed that this chairperson certification was unnecessary and redundant. Next slide. The second area that the proposed text change would affect is in relation to waterfront bulk regulation. So this is a diagram that I had shown you previously that illustrates the proposed contextual envelopes for the Thirty-Ninth Street building. So the, just to orient you, the perspective has changed, has shifted a bit. So we're looking south. The South Brooklyn Marine Terminal is in the foreground, and zoning lot four and the New York Harbor are in the lower right of the image. The contextual envelope proposed are shown in the solid black lines. Existing buildings are in the light shaded gray color, and the areas where additional floor area would be permitted by the proposed contextual envelope is shaded in yellow. The applicant has stated that the proposal contemplates adaptive reuse of the buildings on zoning lot four. Therefore, the contextual envelopes being proposed accommodates the existing form of those buildings and allows for the flexibility for some vertical expansions. From an agency staff perspective, we at City Planning support the adaptive reuse of the existing buildings at Industry City and the proposed envelope, which would bring these buildings into compliance and allow for some future flexibility to expand. These contextual envelopes would need to waive requirements of the underlying bulk regulation. This would be the case irrespective of the underlying bulk regulations that are being waived, whether they are waterfront bulk regulations or non-waterfront bulk regulations. It has been the experience of staff at the agency that when an action is proposed, such as a large-scale special permit, that includes some areas that are subject to waterfront bulk regulations and some areas that are not subject to waterfront bulk regulations, confusion can result with respect to the different sets of bulk waivers that would be applicable within the same special permit area. In order to simplify those kinds of special permits, there is precedent in the zoning resolution, specifically in Section sixty-two one-thirty-two, that allows for large-scale developments to be subject to a consistent set of underlying bulk regulations, when a portion of the affected area is subject to waterfront regulations and a portion is not subject to waterfront regulations. In the case of this application, which proposes a special permit that's very similar to a large-scale development, the same provision was supported in order to have a consistent set of underlying regulations and provide clarity within the application's waiver diagram. Next slide. In response to questions that the Commission posed on the applicant's approach to resiliency, at the pre-hearing review session, I shared that since two thousand and thirteen, the applicant has invested over four hundred million dollars in basic infrastructure upgrades. Next slide. This has included several measures that help to address resiliency and stormwater management, including modernizing and elevating over fifty percent of the electrical distribution system that's located in an existing building from the basement to the rooftops in order to mitigate risks associated with future floods, and providing over five acres of publicly-accessible, one back, sorry, thank you so much, and providing over five acres of publicly-accessible green spaces to improve site proximity through the three courtyards in the Finger Building. In response to questions regarding the applicant's approach to resiliency posed at the public hearing, some additional information has been provided by the applicant on the existing flood risks and the anticipated strategy. Next slide. So this is an image showing FEMA's preliminary flood insurance rate maps, which were released in two thousand and fifteen and are the best available source of flood hazard data for building code and planning purposes. The project area is outlined in red, the one-hundred-year floodplain is shaded in blue, and the five-hundred-year floodplain is shown in green. Next slide. So here is a diagram showing the Finger Buildings, and we're facing northwest, so you have Second Avenue located on the top of this diagram and Third Avenue located along the bottom of the diagram. This diagram shows the extent of the one-hundred-year floodplain in the two shades of gray, with the different shades representing different elevations of the floodplain. Existing buildings that are located in the floodplain are outlined in green, and the proposed new buildings located in the floodplain are outlined in red. As you can see, existing buildings one through ten and the proposed new building eleven all have As you can see, existing buildings one through 10 and the proposed new building 11 all have a portion of their footprint within the 100-year floodplain. The proposed Gateway Building is not located in the floodplain. Next slide. Here is the same diagram showing the 39th Street building. So in terms of orientation, again, 39th Street is at the top of the diagram, and the waterfront would be located kind to the left. All existing buildings and the proposed new building 21 would be located entirely within or they would have a portion of their footprint within the 100-year floodplain. All new buildings that are located either entirely within or partially within the 100-year floodplain would be required to comply with Appendix G requirements of the building code for flood resilient construction. All of the existing buildings at Industry City that are located entirely within or within a portion of the 100-year floodplain would be required to comply with Appendix G requirements upon substantial improvement. The applicant anticipates that upon full build-out of the project, all buildings, including the existing buildings, will comply with Appendix G requirements for flood proofing. The most challenging building within the entire Industry City complex is Building 24, which is located in the upper left, excuse me. So this is the building that's closest to the waterfront that we just took a look at previously. So in this building, the first floor is substantially below the flood elevation, and when Building 24 is redeveloped, it would be wet floodproofed. And this means that it would be designed to flood in a storm event. So this would be accomplished by limiting the first floor to temporary uses, such as kiosk and pop-up arcades. All of the other buildings within the floodplain have first floors that are less than two feet below flood levels. And when investments in these buildings exceed the trigger for flood proofing measures as outlined in Appendix G, which is defined as substantial improvement, measures such as temporary flood barriers would be installed to protect them during storm events. However, the applicant has stated that they intend to exceed co-re requirements with respect to new buildings. A number of methods are currently under consideration to address resiliency in the construction of the proposed new building. These include constructing new buildings a minimum of two feet above the floodplain, which exceeds free board by one foot, designing new buildings to have the ability to practically retrofit the ground for uses with flood gates, marine glass, and other methods should see level rise more rapidly than predicted, utilizing materials that reduce the carbon footprint of construction, potentially including sustainable timber, carbonating concrete, such as carbon cure, and recycled construction materials that exceed LEED requirements, including the latest technologies for onsite renewable green energy production, including but not limited to solar and wind energy and onsite battery storage, and incorporating various technologies such as green roofs and other methods that exceed city code requirements for stormwater quantity and quality discharges, and renewable clean energy to fuel all new building heating and electricity. It should be noted that while the measures I just mentioned utilize existing technologies and best practices, the applicant continues to monitor and keep abreast of new technologies and practices to continue improving the development's sustainable and resilience impact. While today such technologies may not exist or may not be in wide deployment, the field is developing rapidly, and the applicant may pursue other resiliency measures that could differ from what I just described. Next slide. So in response to the commission's questions regarding streetscape improvements that may help to address resiliency in and around the project area, this is a list of city-led transportation improvements that I had shown at the pre-hearing review session. These are planned investments that are either underway or are planned for the area. So they're separate from the proposed actions. And so I won't repeat the details of that information, but I will share some renderings that may help to illustrate how some of these measures will contain landscaping that will help to improve resiliency and stormwater management in the public right-of-ways in and around the project area. Next slide. So here is a rendering of a portion of the Brooklyn Waterfront Greenway, which has a planned route along Second Avenue and 39th Street in the project area. This is a rendering of a typical streetscape improvement along one of the east-west streets leading to the waterfront. In this case, this is a rendering of 42nd Street. Next slide. Here is a rendering of improvements to be made at the intersection of 39th Street and Second Avenue. Next slide. And here's some renderings of the EDC-led redevelopment of Bush Terminal, specifically the Made in New York campus. That will include a number of streetscape improvements. Next slide. This is also a rendering of the Made in New York campus. So again, just as a reminder, the Made in New York campus is located directly south of the 39th Street building. Next slide. So agency staff would like to address some comments that were made during the public hearing as well. The first is regarding consistency of the proposed actions with the WRP, or the Waterfront Revitalization Program. WRP establishes the city's policies for development and use of the waterfront. WRP consistency review is required as part of the environmental analysis when discretionary land use actions are proposed for a site that is located in the coastal zone boundary. A WRP consistency assessment was undertaken by agency staff as part of the EIS, and it was determined that the proposed actions will not substantially hinder the achievement of any WRP policy and is consistent with the WRP. Regarding specific comments made about the lack of water-dependent and maritime uses in the proposed development, the project area is functionally landlocked with constrained minimal water adjacency. Water-dependent uses typically require significant waterfront frontage and direct in-water access. As such, water-dependent uses and maritime or marine transport may not be feasible at this location. With respect to public access to the waterfront and waterfront amenities, the project actions do not impact existing access to Bush Terminal Piers Park or any other surrounding waterfront, nor would they preclude potential future waterfront public access within the project area or surrounding sites. Second, in response to a question that was posed by the commission in regards to how resiliency measures at individual sites or locations are considered in the context of broader neighborhood needs or upland protection threats. Broadly speaking, whereas long stretches of parkland or other public right-of-ways can be designed for neighborhood-scale coastal protection strategies, individual sites typically have minimal ability to provide upland coastal protection for surrounding properties. Any future developments will need to comply with stormwater management best practices that can help with localized drainage, retention, and onsite treatment while reducing runoff. There was a specific question that was posed regarding the East Side Coastal Resiliency Project and the potential impacts in other areas, specifically across the river. So while the proposed development is not located near East River Park, as part of the hydrodynamic modeling that the East Side Coastal Resiliency Project underwent, it was determined that there would be virtually no discernible risk of water rebound in the event of a storm from the in-place construction of the raised park structure. And finally, the last bullet is in regards to the mix of uses in manufacturing districts. There were a number of statements made at the public hearing calling for a limit on uses that are currently as of right in the project area and would continue to be as of right in the proposed rezoning, both of which are currently M districts. So these uses include office, storage and warehousing, and some retail uses. So one thing that we want to remind the commission of is that storage and warehousing comprise 1.4 million square feet of space at Industry City today. So restricting storage and warehousing alone would make over 25% of the existing floor area non-conforming. It is the department's stance that maintaining flexibility regarding the types of uses that are permitted in M districts supports adaptive reuse and the ability for buildings to accommodate the evolution and diversification of businesses over time and the changing needs of the economy. As I mentioned during the pre-hearing review session, we have seen that lost buildings in M districts across the city that were originally built to house manufacturing businesses or distribution kind of centers have successfully been converted to accommodate a variety of uses, including modern manufacturing and a range of commercial uses. As the needs and technologies of businesses cannot be predicted into the future, the department believes that maintaining this flexibility with regards to uses is an important tool to support economic growth. While Industry City could theoretically be occupied fully by a single use, such as office, under the current zoning and the proposed rezoning, we feel that there are a number of reasons that this is unlikely. Given the amount of space that the complex could offer upon full renovation, it's unlikely to be filled with corporate tenants that typically seek Class A office space in more traditional CBDs that are centrally located and draw their employees from across the tri-state area. The market for office uses at a location that is not within those traditional CBDs is anticipated to be served by businesses that have smaller spatial needs, cannot afford office rents located in those traditional CBDs, and have a significant workforce that commute locally and from other areas within Brooklyn, and they value a diverse mix of uses and amenities on-site. We have seen that this mix of uses is a key part of the branding that has helped to make adaptive reuse complexes and some new construction developments successful in locations such as this one. One of the characteristics of these types of developments is that the distinctions between office and manufacturing uses can sometimes be blurred. So one example of this is that fashion design firms that used to produce patterns manually are now doing this kind of work digitally. So this is an example of a manufacturing business whose model has evolved with changing technologies, and today they may look and feel a lot more like an office environment. For manufacturing companies that are seeking to stay in New York City or seeking to locate in New York City, there are aspects of outer borough locations, such as this one on the Sunset Park waterfront, that we have seen be attractive, such as the proximity to a local workforce, access to transit, and lower rent. And I'll note that the applicant submitted a letter to the commission on July 16th sharing some of the experiences of their tenants during the pandemic so far. That letter reiterated the importance of flexibility with respect to uses that the proposed actions would allow in order to facilitate the proposed development and the ability to accommodate changing context and needs. So for example, one of the unanticipated needs that arose during the pandemic was the need for flexibility to accommodate additional storage space for this manufacturing tenant and for local hospitals as well. This helps to provide quick access to personal protective equipment. The full letter was included in your briefing package. Next slide. So finally, I will summarize the Borough President's recommendation. The Borough President held a public hearing on January 8th and submitted his recommendation on March 5th as follows. For the zoning text amendment and the zoning map amendment to approve with modifications; for the special permit to disapprove with modifications; and for the city map change approval. You've received a copy of the full Borough President's recommendations in your briefing packages, but I will provide a high-level overview of the modifications now. Some of those modifications are directed to the applicant and some of which are directed to governmental entities. Next slide. The Borough President requests to eliminate or prohibit the following uses: hotels, eating and drinking establishments with entertainment and a capacity of over 200 persons, or any such establishments with any capacity in dancing, automotive service establishments, unless they are limited to renewable energy sources, and trucking terminals and motor freight stations with no limit on size. He requests that amusement uses be regulated in the same way that the applicant proposes to regulate retail and service establishment uses, and this means that they would be subject to a total square footage cap and would also trigger a parking requirement. Next slide. The Borough President requests to define a set of required industrial and community benefit uses, which are listed above. So this is comprised of a select number of community facility, commercial, and industrial uses. And the amount of retail, service, and amusement uses that's permitted at Industry City would be limited by the amount of these required uses that's provided on-site, so there'd be a linkage between these two groups of uses. And there are a number of different ratios for the different types of uses of interest and whether or not they're located in existing floor area or new floor area, and the full details of which can be found in the full recommendation in your package. In addition, the special permit requirements regarding compliance, recordation, periodic notification, and annual third-party reporting pursuant to Section 74962 of the zoning resolution be in place. So Section 74962 refers to the special permit that is available within the industrial business incentive area that was created in 2016 to encourage the retention of industrial uses in the Greenpoint-Williamsburg IBC. This designation provides an incentive for the creation of new industrial space by allowing more floor area for office uses. Next slide. The Borough President proposed restrictions on a number of uses, including storage and warehousing and accessory retail, and for retail, service, and amusement uses, proposes a total cap of 750,000 square feet, that such uses not be permitted on zoning lot four beyond 100 feet of First Avenue, that there be restrictions on the location of primary access to such uses within the Finger Building, and that there be restrictions on such uses that are in excess of 10,000 square feet per establishment. Next slide. With regards to parking, modifications include access to high-capacity alternative fuel, electric charging, dedicated spaces for car share, and modified bicycle parking requirements. And transportation modifications include sidewalk extensions at two intersections and funding for a city-led study on the feasibility of a shuttle service that would connect 38th Street and Fourth Avenue to 39th Street and First Avenue. Next slide. Both modifications include ensuring that the courtyards in the Finger Building remain open to a height of 30 feet above grade, and that the contextual envelopes proposed for the new building 11 be limited to the illustrative building that's shown in the material. Next slide. There were some specific modifications requested regarding the special permit findings. The first one shown here is a wording change to one of the existing use findings, number 2I, and the proposed changes are highlighted in red. And the second and third are actually new bulk findings proposed to be added to the special permit text. And the first is in relation to access to private streets, and the second is in relation to locally-based enterprises and minority and women-owned businesses. Next slide. The Borough President calls on city council to memorialize commitments from the applicant regarding tech apprenticeship, support for CLCPA-compliant businesses, advancing a STEAM center or a technical high school at Industry City, and providing protected bicycle parking. He calls on the Department of Education to fund broadband in Community District 7, fund a commitment for a STEAM center at Industry City, identify underutilized high schools to reposition as middle schools, and he calls on the Department of Small Business Services to launch new and expand existing tech apprenticeship programs. Next slide. He calls on the Economic Development Corporation to prioritize leasing to uses that are consistent with the grid proposal, encourage non-green industrial businesses in Sunset Park to relocate to Industry City, advance the development of a second port facility between the bulkhead and pierhead line south of Bush Terminal Piers Park, to advance ferry stop at 39th Street, initiate a feasibility study for the overbuild of the 38th Street train yard, as well as overbuild of the Brooklyn Army Terminal parking lot. And he calls for the Office of Civil Justice at the Human Resources Administration to implement services in zip codes 11220 and 11232 pursuant to the Universal Access to Legal Services Law. Next slide. He calls on the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to fund preservation initiatives, expand the Landlord Ambassador's Program, increase funding to local homeowner and tenant advocacy groups, extend the Certificate of No Harassment through the community district. He calls on the City Planning Commission and City Council to modify the mandatory inclusionary housing program to allow for households to qualify for affordable housing units who would otherwise not qualify because of their rent-and-burden status. And he calls on the Department of Transportation to increase city bike stations, study bus rapid transit along Third Avenue, analyze traffic calming and pedestrian safety measures along Third Avenue and its cross streets. Next slide. He calls on the Department of City Planning to study a subway stairway bonus by upsetting the west side of Fourth Avenue from 33rd Street to 36th Street, and he calls on the Department of Parks and Recreation to fund upgrades to five open space resources and playgrounds in Community District 7, and he calls on the Mayor's Office of Resiliency to advance the Brooklyn Waterfront Greenway as a way to enhance bicycle safety along Third Avenue and achieve integrated storm surge protection. And finally, he calls on the New York City Transit... Next slide. Apologies. He calls on New York City Transit to reopen existing secondary entrances at all subway stations in Community District 7 and to advance fare integration with the New York City ferry system. Following the issuance of the Borough President's recommendation, the applicant issued a formal response on March 13th stating that they would be willing to implement some of the restrictions included in the Borough President's modifications, specifically the removal of hotels, a defined set of industrial and community benefit uses, and limiting the expanded range of uses permitted by the proposed actions to the proportion of such industrial and community benefit uses provided on-site. That full letter was included in your briefing package. So from the agency's perspective, in light of our view regarding the need for use flexibility more broadly, the department believes that the modifications suggested regarding eliminating more broadly, the department believes that the modifications suggested regarding elimination of uses or restrictions on uses that are currently as of right in manufacturing districts are actually counterproductive and would not be consistent with the administration's goal of supporting job growth and job creation. In order to support job growth today and into the future, we believe that we must ensure that spaces, whether those are existing spaces to be adaptively reused or spaces to be constructed through new construction, can readily accommodate different kinds of jobs and are able to adapt to the changing needs over time, whether those changes are driven by changes in operations, technologies, the state of the economy, or unforeseen events such as the current pandemic. So that concludes this presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Connie. As with your prior presentations, incredibly comprehensive and clear. We'll start with Commissioner Murray.
Connie, can you hear me? Yes. So Connie, thank you for the presentation. I know that, you know, one of the biggest concerns when we were giving the presentation earlier was that of hotels, and it actually came up at the end. I was wondering whenever it comes up. It came up at the end that the recommendation is to have no hotel, which I don't think really serves the purpose of what they're trying to do at Industry City. But my question on the day at the time that this was presented was, comparing this to Philadelphia as we were doing, can you tell me what is the number of folks compared to square footage that the hotels have provided? And we're seeing that in Philadelphia, it was one hotel room per 32,000 square feet of development. And here, we're proposing one hotel room per 16,000 square feet of development, in essence doubling what Philadelphia has done. And we're looking to Philadelphia as an example. So I'm questioning why the need for doubling of hotel space at Industry City.
Great. Thank you for that question. I can ask the applicant to provide more information specifically about the number of rooms that they thought was appropriate in the proposed actions in their proposed development, given the amount of square footage that's represented by the full build-out.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful because, you know, the issue is of the hotel, and if the hotel is supposed to be purpose-built for Industry City, we want to make sure that we provide what's necessary for Industry City, but that we alleviate the concerns of the community and the Borough President of just either a hotel turning into a shelter or, you know, or a hotel that's not serving the purpose. And that's something that I think that would be critical to accepting the fact that there is a hotel here.
Noted. Thank you.
Connie, am I correct in noting that the applicant has said that it will withdraw the request for a hotel?
Yes, they said that when this application reaches City Council, they would remove the hotel use entirely from the application.
Interesting. Thank you.
Okay, next is Commissioner Dweck.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I think that this is going to be coming up for vote sometime by early October. It's March or October 4th prior to that. So my comment to that would be...
Withdrawn.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I just said if it's not withdrawn, God only knows.
Right. So my comment to that would be, I wonder if the Borough President's recommendations, which were written on March 5th prior to this explosion of the pandemic, might have changed since he wrote them and perhaps we can get some kind of update from them? Or do you have an update? Have you been in contact with them? Is there any material changes to their recommendation based on the current economic environment that we're in?
We have not received any updates from the Borough President's recommendation, but I think it's a great suggestion, and we will certainly reach out and see if there are any additional thoughts, given what's been happening over the past few months.
Thank you so much.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation, Connie. It was very, very comprehensive. I'm just wondering, given the councilman, Councilman Manchaca, his public declaration about his intent on this, I assume that the applicants are going to go forward, but have they submitted anything to the department post the comments of the local council member?
We have not received any information or updates or a statement post the comments that you referenced from the council member.
And I guess we don't know until the determination, but, you know, is there any reason to believe that his public comments will not be dispositive of the outcome by the city council? Do we know? Or do we have any sense of that at this point?
I will note on that that the applicant has not informed us at this point of an intent to withdraw. We saw today an article by two other members of the council highlighting the importance of Industry City as a citywide matter, and certainly as a department with an application before us and an application that we believe is consistent with a city emerging from tremendous job losses is one that should be considered. And so we think it appropriate, and it's our job as a commission to consider, to continue to evaluate it through the end of our U of time clock.
Well, I would simply agree. I think it is a determination while located in Brooklyn that has a citywide policy impact. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
Oh, thank you. I had a similar question to the Vice Chair Knuckles, actually. In addition to the Borough President, Councilman Manchaca, the community board also had a series of questions or opposition concerns, and I wonder, have there been any written response to those also?
We have not received a written response to the community board's recommendations. The Borough President's recommendations, which are quite extensive, do reference a lot of the community board recommendations, but we have not received anything other than that.
And is that fairly typical? If the BP puts in a very comprehensive report, does that sort of supersede and accommodate the community board? Is that typical?
I don't know that I would say that that was typical. I think that the length and the extent of the recommendations, both issued by the community board and the Borough President in this case, were quite exhaustive, and so I personally have not seen such recommendations before, so I probably would not call them typical.
I know, but I mean, that's risen from my question, really. I mean, the councilmen and the community board, these were not trivial remarks. They, there was a real kind of struggle for the soul of Industry City, you know? Was it going to queue to its original purpose of industrial light manufacturing and workforce development, or was it going to give up its soul to hotels and retail? And it seems to me that's an important issue that the applicant really needs to address.
I would note on that point that the other philosophical change there is the extent to which the special permit dictates what goes where when, including restrictions on warehousing, which have been shown during the pandemic to be an incredibly helpful use. And so I think the other philosophy that is at play here is the extent to which the, first the commission and then the council dictate specific uses versus adopting a more flexible envelope, which is certainly what the applicant has argued for, that allows the area to grow organically, including changes since March, since the pandemic. We should have said at the outset that the Borough President's recommendations, we didn't go in as much detail through the community board's recommendations because they were largely incorporated and expanded upon in the Borough President's. Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you. I follow Commissioner Bernie's question with another one, which is, I think, in addition to being a struggle for the soul of Industry City, what we've also heard is that this is a struggle for the soul of the neighborhood. Is this an application or proposal that's going to catalyze good jobs, or is it going to catalyze, accelerate residential displacement? And I know that many of the remedies or protections that have been sought by people during the public hearing and the community board and the Borough President are really things that are beyond the applicant's ability to do anything about. There are calls to the city to implement some anti-displacement measures. And I firmly believe that it would be appropriate for the city, if it is such a believer in the power of the jobs that are going to be created, the job creating potential of this proposal, be a participant in addressing those concerns. And I wonder if, I know that the position has long been that this is a private application and there's therefore no role for such measures to be provided at the city at this point. I wonder if there's any change in that attitude and whether we might see some of the things that the community has called for, like expansion of the certificate of no harassment or the right to counsel, whether those might become part of this proposal by the time it gets to the city council.
I can certainly follow up with HPD, but certainly, as you properly note, the position had been that this is a private application. Right to counsel, I believe, is a citywide program. See. No, that was just Commissioner Cirillo reaching for something, not raising his hand. Other questions? Okay, we can follow up on the points that have been raised by the commissioners at our next review session, which will be coming up in two weeks. It is for matters like this and some others that that was part of the determination of starting commission meetings for matters in the pipeline before starting the clock so that we have time for deliberation without finding ourselves jammed by an inexorable U of time clock. And again, thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on, our other post-hearing follow-ups. I'll just read them off. If there are further questions or comments, please, you know, raise your hand. So the week's fill in CP at Prospect Place, the Nihop Old Stanley, 5914 Bay Parkway rezoning, and three St. Mark's Place. Seeing no raised hands. Looks like perhaps Commissioner Levin is raising her hand.
Yeah, I got my hands up. Yes, I just wanted to ask on St. Mark's Place, I think we heard pretty loud and strong at the public hearing that many in the community think the proposed new building is just too big. My question really isn't about that, but I think we did hear some suggestions about ways in which the new building could be adapted to address some of the other concerns like the quality of retail space and so forth. Has the applicant made any changes in the proposal for the new building?
Don't believe we have anything in the view, but...
Can we double-check before it comes back for a vote?
Let's just make sure.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
No, yeah, this is Matthew Petrus.
Hi. Great to see everybody again. So there aren't any proposed changes since you last heard about this? The retail space on the ground floor was already designed to be flexible and allow for different configurations, so I don't anticipate that there will be any changes as it relates to COVID planning. I will double-check with the applicant to see if that is the case, but my understanding is that there's no changes since you last saw it.
And again, we will report on that, back on that in two weeks at our review session after Matthew has checked with the applicant. Other hands. Well, then, I will thank the commission. We did it on March 16th with our first remote meeting. It was a very truncated meeting. This was more, had more going on. I so appreciate the time you took to learn this new technology, to participate actively, and boy, does it feel good to be in motion. And I'll see you on Wednesday for our first public, for our first remote public hearing. Thank you all.
Thank you. Take care.
All right.